Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Mill Creek Township Monday, November 9th, 2020. Committee of the whole meeting. And we'll start with roll call.
Shall we start with the committee?
Committees first, I'm sorry. First one here is personnel.
Okay. We'll start with personnel and policy. Roll call, Mr. Buska.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Z.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Mr. Lindman.
Here.
Ms. McClinton.
Here.
Mr. Maravito. He's absent. Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
Okay. Moving on, item 2.01 Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting Minutes of October 12th, 2020. Motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Ms. McClinton.
Okay, thank you, President DePlacido. The Personnel and Policy Committee has quite a few action items, so we'll go by them, go through them one by one, and if you, well, go through them, then I'll make a motion, and we'll have discussion after. So just notate your, your comment or your questions. First, we have action item 3.01, and this is Policy 111, and this is regarding lesson plans. They will be interpreted by the building principals and accessible, they must all be accessible by the subs. There are some guidelines listed, but I don't see that any of them are checked. I'll want to ask Attorney Senate, do those need to be checked, or why aren't they checked?
I can take that question. They are not checked because our collective bargaining unit agreement allows our teachers flexibility without us dictating the structure or template for their use. So the top part of that policy recommended by PSBA covers what they are going to be turned in and they're reviewed by the administration, but the bottom part where there were guideline options we did not select because that would be contrary to our collective bargaining.
Thank you, Mrs. Mosley. 3.02 is Policy 113.1, and this is regarding discipline of students with disabilities. This is asking MTSD to implement the positive behavior supplemental plans, and this will address those behaviors, disciplinary behaviors that interfere with learning. The students are subject to discipline for violations of law or policy in accordance with the law, the policy, their IEP, and their positive behavior support plans. The district will determine any disciplinary actions and whether it's a manifestation of a student's disability, and if it will result in a change of educational placement. Next, we have 3.03, and this is Policy 113.2, Behavior Support. And this will, this is, I'm sorry, can't read my notes. This is in regards to whether a student poses a threat to themselves or to others, and this again applies to students with disabilities. 3.0, 3.04 is Policy 113.4, and this is confidentiality of special education students' information. And this is, MTSD protects the confidentiality of students personally, their personally identifiable information, or PII, and that information includes and isn't always limited to the name of the student, the address, their person, any personal identifier like their social security number, or any indirect identifier such as their date of birth. All parents and guardians have the right to review their students' information, to request any amendments, and to ask for copies of that information. The district will retain copies for 100 years from when the, from when the student turns 21, and the district must, must obtain parental consent prior to disclosing this information to any third parties. Moving on, I, action item 3.05, Policy 112, Extracurricular Activities. Obviously, the district fully supports all of our extracurricular activities as a means to building our students' social relations and develop their interests. This policy lays out the Board of Directors' responsibilities for supporting these activities on and off campus. 3.06, Policy 123, Interscholastic Athletics. The Board supports these. These activities include all activities that occur between, between schools, within the district, or outside of the district. These activities are offered on an equal basis to all of our students. The program will ensure the safety of all participants, and it also sets out the eligibility standards for academic eligibility, attendance, and adherence to our Code of Conduct. And this also adds the Trojan Ice Hockey. The Board permits use of our communication platforms and inclusion in the yearbook for that group. They're actually a club sport, they're not one of our sports. Okay. 3.07, Policy 123, Sudden Cardiac Arrests. And this provides the guidance to help prevent sudden cardiac arrest through education of warning signs, and it lays out a return-to-play policy. Next is 3, is 3.08, Policy 203, Immunizations and Communicable Diseases. The Board follows the guidance and orders from the state and local health officials. Parents are notified of this policy at the start of the school year. All students shall be immunized against specific diseases according to law unless they are exempt. The district will maintain these records, and a student who is not immunized and does not have a valid exemption may not return to school. There are provisions for homeless and foster children. Policy, I'm sorry, 3.10 is Policy 247, and that is hazing. I'm sorry, did I skip one?
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.09. Policy 220, Students' Expression and Distribution of Materials. Students may exercise their right of free speech, however, the district may limit the distribution of certain materials that if, if those materials would materially or substantially interfere with the education process. This applies to all on-campus activities and off-campus activities, after-hours activities, and also after-hours activities. And obviously, you can't make threats to people at property. Next, we have Policy 310, I'm sorry, 3.10, and it's Policy 247, Hazing. This is prohibited, hazing is prohibited at all times, and it occurs when someone intentionally, knowingly, or recklessly, for the purposes of intimidation, causes another to violate a law, consume something harmful, endure any brutality, endure any act that creates a reasonable likelihood of harm. There's also aggravated hazing, which results in serious bodily harm, and hazing is also prohibited, and it can be a group that does it as well, not just the individual. Obviously, the district has, prohibits, prohibits all types of hazing. I'm gonna catch my breath for a minute, and just to say, all of the, we have so many of them because the PSBA has not issued any new policies over the last couple of months, which is why we have like 25 of them today, so please bear with me as I read from my notes.
Yeah, thank you. I could just add on, you know, it's like there's a quarterly newsletter, so every quarter we get a newsletter or policy update. Well, they didn't do it spring, they didn't do it summer. They put one out the last week of September, and then a week later, they put out, you know, the next ones. They actually put out two within two weeks, the end of September, beginning of October, so it took not standard admin team a little time to get through the 25 of them, but that's the reason they're such a large chunk. And most of them, as you can see, are small language adjustments based on things that have, you know, resulted out of, you know, COVID, if you will, or these things that have come up.
Thank you. So yes, I am a, I'm sorry if I sound like I'm, feel like I'm droning on. Next, we have our, it's 3.11, and this is Policy 249, Bullying and Cyberbullying. Obviously, this is strictly prohibited. It sets out the process and procedure for reporting investigations and consequences. Policy 3.1, I'm sorry, 3.12, Policy 252, Dating Violence. This is obviously prohibited at all times. It sets out our reporting procedure for any student who believes that they have been a victim of dating violence. 3.13, Policy 317.1 is Educator Misconduct. This requires all educators to comply with the Code of Professional Practice and Conduct and Educator Discipline Act. The district has a duty to report any violation within 15 days and cooperate with all investigations. 3.14 is Policy 318, Attendance and Tardiness for Employees. The district will establish a process for staff to report unexcused absences. This will be overseen by the business manager and the personnel director, and the immediate supervisor will be the one to determine if an absence or tardiness is excusable. 3.15, Policy 331, Job-Related Expenses. This is a revision to a previous policy, and it is for the reimbursement of actual and necessary expenses by a staff that has, they have incurred in the course of their, of performing their services. The business manager will oversee this, and those, those are for reasonable expenses that the teachers or the educators incur. 3.16, Policy 332, and this is working periods, this is also a revision. Regular working periods are necessary to ensure the constant operation of the district. The Board can modify its calendar to meet the instructional and health and safety standards of our students. Oh, I'm sorry, did I, no. Policy, I'm sorry, 3.17, Policy 334, which is sick leave. And this ensures that sick leave is available according to law and all applicable agreements. Proof may be required, such as a doctor's note. 3.18, Policy 335, is a Family and Medical Leave Act. The Board will provide eligible employees with leave in accordance with FMLA. All requests go to Human Resources, and guidelines for FMLA are established by law. Unpaid, it is 12 weeks for an employee and a child, 26 weeks when a, you have to care for a injured service, family member who is an injured service member. 3.19, Policy 340, Responsibility for Student Welfare. Each employee is responsible to ensure all students are supervised by a teacher or staff when engaged in any district activities. 3.20, Policy 705, is Facilities and Workplace Safety. All district facilities must be maintained to prioritize safety. The Board requires advanced, the Board requires adherence to policies requiring face coverings except for accommodations are necessary, and there is no ending to this particular requirement. 3.21, Policy 803, is the School Calendar. I'm sorry, I think I got myself turned around here.
You're right.
I say that, but I don't have any notes for school calendar. Thank you, Darcy, I'm sorry.
So it's just institute the ability for the Board to be flexible, to follow, you know, that we maintain the 100 maybe days of instruction and the instructional hour requirements, but that due to, you know, unforeseen circumstances like pandemic, et cetera, that the Board has the ability to reduce the length of daily instructional time, and, you know, flex calendars to, to meet, meet those demands.
Thank you, Mrs. Mosley. Sorry about that, guys. 3.22, Policy 805.2, is our School Security Personnel. The superintendent will appoint a school safety coordinator who will oversee our school police officers, our SSOs and SROs, and our security guards. 3.23, Policy 824, is Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. This applies to all district employees, volunteers, student teachers, and independent contractors. It outlines all prohibited contact in person and on electronic platforms. It will, it outlines our reporting, our reporting process, the investigation process, and the disciplinary, disciplinary actions. 3.24, Policy 904, Public Attendance at School Events. All public participation are subject to the policy, no tobacco, are subject to this policy, no tobacco or vaping, and district may limit attendance in accordance with any health and safety guidelines. Finally, 2.05, Policy 907, is School Visitors. Again, the school will set the guidelines out, they may change these to maintain, to be in accordance with any health and safety laws or regulations. This will set out the guidelines for visitors, they may be limited. There is only one point of entry in each building. Arrangements have to be made in advance before coming into a building. Any visitor must provide ID and may be screened for a fever. They have to sign in and sign out. You have to, you will receive a badge, and you must display it. Parents and guardians may visit a classroom with prior approval and in accordance with our established rules and regulations. And next, we have 2, 3.26, and it is a November Personnel Report. Okay, we have at Asbury, we have a resignation of a second-shift custodian. At Bell Valley, we have a recommendation for an educational assistant. Does not appear we have anything at Chestnut Hill. At Grandview, we have a recommendation for a Title I Educational Assistant. At Tracy, we have a resignation in our Child Development Group, and it's our group supervisor. We have a recommendation for an Academic Educational Assistant. At JS Wilson, we have a resignation of our Special Education Teacher for Emotional Support. There is nothing at Walnut Creek or Westlake, or Ridgefield and Sarah Reid. At McDowell Intermediate, we have a change of status, a Special Education Assistant, two Special Education Assist, two Special Education Assistants. We have a leave of absence of an Educational Assistant at McDowell Intermediates. There are new changes at McDowell. At the Mill Creek Education Center, we have a recommendation for our first student employees. We have new hires and changes, they're listed on your sheet. We also have a termination or retirement. 2021 Activity, Activity Supplementals. We have a resignation in the intermule, in the intermules for our Lego advisor. I'm reading that correctly. And we, no, we have a resignation and a change of status. Between, are there two, I'm sorry, Darcy, are there two?
So what happens is typically there's two advisors, and they each, you know, share the stipend 50/50, it's covered the hour. One of them is resigning, so the other Lego piece advisor will take over the job. There'll only be one, yeah.
Thank you very much. And finally, for 2021 Athletics, we have our Westlake Boys Basketball Coach for 7th and 8th Grade, and our GSW Wrestling Coach for 7th and 8th Grade. I will make a motion to move all those forward.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Yeah. Item 3.06, the Interscholastic Athletics, do you need?
Yes.
Okay. I guess the changes, I have a couple of questions. I mean, we have a lot of clubs that are unique, associated, or not directly with the district.
Are you referring to the hockey team specifically?
Trojan Ice Hockey, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, so that's actually not a change to sort of DePlacido, that has been in our policy. There are very few changes to this policy. On the first, under definition, there's two words they've added, which is interschool athletics. And then the other changes are adding that the superintendent will inform the Board of Schedule Changes, and the superintendent will secure Board approval before making a change to the schedule. The Trojan Ice Hockey language has been in that policy for a very long time, and it remains there.
I guess.
The reason it's in green is that when we reviewed the policy, we noticed that that had been taken out by PSBA, and we put it back.
Okay. Well, I guess I still go back to the question, why is it there and not others that are similar kind of status? But even the wording of this, Board recognized that this club has unique status, is an independent club team not affiliated with the school district? Then you go to the last paragraph there, is this club represents Mill Creek Township School District? Is it, or is it not represent Mill Creek Township School District?
I think it does.
I think it does.
It's a unique club, and I don't think there's any other clubs that are similarly situated at the present time.
So is it, is it, or is it not affiliated with the school district?
I would say it is. They wear McDowell Trojan uniforms, and they, you know, participate in McDowell Hockey.
Well, then I suggest we change it.
Well, I don't think you provide any financial support for that, and that's why it's unique.
Okay, unique, whatever, but it is an independent club team not affiliated with the school district. Is that true?
I think that's going to the financial aspect of the club, of all of, it's my understanding.
Correct. The parents pay for the.
Parents pay for it.
So it's not affiliated with the school district?
It's not financially affiliated.
It doesn't say that, it says not affiliated. But then the last, again, the last, the first sentence in the last paragraph, kind of, it just needs clarification, because I'm not sure it agrees with each other.
Okay, so could Tim and I work on the wording for that?
Well, that's, that's my input. I don't, I don't even want to handle it, but it seems that there are a lot of other unique clubs around, and why this one? I know it's apparently been in there a while, but.
I think a lot of those clubs, though, that are clubs, are actually in our yearbook, just like that one is. When you go through the yearbook, you'll see lacrosse, and you'll see the other teams that are also, those club teams, and they're in our yearbook, and that's what that says, they're in our yearbook, and we include them in our, along with all of those teams in our, like, if you pull up our calendar online, it tells you that lacrosse is playing, hockey's playing, wrestling's playing, so they're all included, they're not getting anything special, they're just, they are in there.
Are the clubs not listed here that are in the yearbook, right?
Right, that are in the yearbook. I, I don't know why, I don't know why that they're in there.
We're reviewing it, maybe we want to look at all that.
Add them all?
Well, no, not add them all, I'm saying, you know, just.
The ones that are in, well, maybe looking instead of, like you said, since there are other teams that are club teams that are in the yearbook and listed on our calendar of events for communication purposes, maybe, instead of it being specifically ice hockey, you're, all those club teams are eligible to be in the yearbook and eligible to be on our, our, our website and our calendar, because that's what it's saying on here.
It just seems we're pointing to them and saying, you, not anybody else.
Right, right, so you said since we're looking to revise it, that's what my suggestion would be, change it from just youth hockey to club teams are eligible to be in the yearbook and be on, in our communication handouts or on our website, because that's, that's what this is saying. This team is right now, you're right, we've singled them out, and we're telling them, we're telling people in our policy, youth hockey is not financially affiliated with the school, but they're allowed to use, they're allowed to be on our calendar for communication purposes, they're allowed to be in our yearbook. So instead of saying youth hockey, we allow all our club teams, because I know I look at the yearbook every year, to be in there. So maybe that's where the wording needs to be, it needs to be more general, since we include all of those teams in the yearbook, and they're all on our calendar.
And the, you know, the, the Trojan Ice Hockey team charges a fee to our students.
Everybody charges a fee to our students.
So they're making money on them.
The school makes money too. I have to pay an activity fee for everything my kids do, whether it's wrestling, indoor track, or hockey.
Yeah, but this is separate from the school. This Trojan Ice Hockey is not.
Do you want to take them out of the yearbook, John?
No, I, I'm not saying, I'm saying there's, there's kind of a disconnect in my mind with these club teams. You know, they're making money, and we're putting it, whether they should be in the yearbook, I'm not.
But that's all this is saying, they're in the yearbook, and there, we tell people when they're playing.
Okay, but again, it's specific to a club team.
Which is why I suggested that we change the wording, and we make it broader to include all club teams, which also charge our students a fee. But if they didn't charge the fee, they would not be, we wouldn't have those teams to offer to our students.
And I would look at that first sentence in the last paragraph, just make sure it's consistent with what you're saying in the first paragraph.
Yes.
It doesn't seem like.
Tim and I work on that to be inclusive, to represent to the other club sports that we have, and bring something back, and one option, identify.
I think that would be a good idea.
We'll bring that back at the end of the month.
Yes, thank you.
Just to confirm, I have a question. They don't have any academic qualifications to participate in these extracurricular activities?
We do have them follow athletic eligibility, just like our other athletes. We do that for all of our club sports leagues, and we do that for all of our, like, speech and debate, our academic sports league, all of our, our clubs that compete, we do utilize that academic eligibility for them.
So are there clubs that we, like, we have financial liability for? So this is one that we don't?
What has been confusing is we have talked about clubs like MIST and Epic, which, you know, charge a parent a monthly fee to participate. Hockey does not do that. It doesn't run like those other club teams, but I'm thinking that's where maybe the confusion lies, so we, we will clarify that section.
Your mic.
I don't have a mic.
Oh.
Eric says he can't hear you. I've got a hard time.
Okay, I will speak up even louder.
Want to say, yeah?
I think at the time, Trojan Hockey was the only club that was PIA double A team. At, at the time this was originally drafted, Trojan Ice Hockey was a, is a PIA double A controlled sport. And you just have to have a club as opposed to a team that is financially supported by the district. And that's why it's in your policy to recognize that they are PIA, PIA double A representing the school district. And there might be some language.
But John, unlike MIST, which has, I mean, these are all of our high school students. These are our students, they're not, they're not possibly someone who doesn't live in the district, they attend McDowell High School, and they represent our team. They're not, it's not like the, it's not a, they are our students. I know we had questions when we talked about MIST, making sure everybody was one of our students. These are all of our students, these are our boys and girls that are, that are currently going to McDowell.
I, I guess a general comment is, if we have a club and it works, if we know of a club that's independent of the district, and it makes so much sense that we have it, that it's there, and it's, and it's a good thing, why don't we formulate a club, or whatever we want to call it?
We were going to bring that, we, if you remember, Aaron had in the budget this year to bring in-house, so to speak, this team, lacrosse, everybody, and when COVID hit, and our, we, we, we had to halt, put a halt to it, we were going to bring them all in-house, and then we had to stop with COVID.
And, and I totally agree with that, but I think overall, down the road, whenever this, we can stop and think for a minute regarding this kind of stuff, that we consider that. Why are we, why are these independent clubs, associated or not associated, whatever? If it's such a good idea, I'm in, but let's bring it in.
Right. I wholeheartedly agree. Is there, are there any other questions or comments on the policies or personnel report?
I have one, and it's, it's the word smithing, it's on Policy 805.2 for School Security Personnel, and maybe this is just a point of clarification, but it lists school police officers, resource officers, and security guards. Do we have security guards, and do we have security officers?
We have only three SSOs.
And this policy doesn't denote SSO, it notes security guards, resource officers, and police officers. I'm on, it, there's, it doesn't say school security officer anywhere in this policy. It references police officers, resource officers, and security guards throughout the policy.
Underneath delegation of responsibility, it says the school safety coordinator will oversee, and it only has SROs as the one that's, no, they're all checked out, so I'm gonna go with our own. So you have school police officers, school resource officers, and school security guards with an X by all of them, but I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's just not in alignment, so the whole podcast talks about security guards, but then the bottom, that brings in a school security officer.
Yes.
Oh, I see, I see.
So that it matches the bottom of the actual section that says SSO.
That's what I'm bringing, it's just a misalignment of terms.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, I see what you're saying.
SSO is defined in the policy in page three, but they're not referenced on page one.
Correct.
Okay, are there any other questions? Comments? All in, oh, I did make a motion to bring everything forward. We had a second and discussion. The committee all in favor of bringing it forward? We are next. Everything for us.
Questions?
We have no informational items. Do we have any questions from the public?
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, personnel and policy committee adjourns.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kuntec.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on. Instruction and Student Services Committee. Uh, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Bosco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Mr. Maribito is absent this evening. Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Mrs. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Roberts?
Here.
And Attorney Sennett.
Here.
Okay, item one point oh two, approval of the agenda. Take a motion.
Motion, Shirley.
Second Dean.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Winchell.
Okay, um, item two point zero one are the Instruction and Student Services Committee meeting minutes of October 12. I'd like to bring that forward in a motion. We have a second.
Second Dean.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to action items. Three point oh one is, um, Dr. Gertrude Barber Center Service Agreements from October twenty eighth of this current year to six eleven of twenty one. Um, these are two agreements for one student. One is to provide the educational services designed to meet the individual needs of the student, um, as designed in the child's IEP. And the second is to provide one-on-one aid services designed to meet the individual needs of the students during the school day. Uh, item three point zero two are the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one McDowell High School Winter Athletics Tentative Schedule. They include, um, coed junior high wrestling, boys junior varsity basketball, boys varsity basketball, boys varsity swimming, coed junior varsity wrestling, coed varsity wrestling, girls junior varsity basketball, girls varsity basketball, and girls varsity swimming. And most of those include events that begin in December and end, um, somewhere in February. Item three point oh three, Dr. Gertrude Barber Center Service Agreement from nine eight twenty twenty through six eleven twenty twenty one. And this is, um, for a student that reserve, receives in-home therapies. I'd like to bring all three of those forward in the form of a motion.
Second Dean.
Okay, are, is the committee in favor of bringing these to the meeting on whatever two weeks from today is, on the twenty-something?
Discussion, maybe.
Is there any discussion on those?
Yes, Shirley, I have one question for you. I know we have the, the tentative schedule for winter sports. Do we have a PIA double A guidance yet on for how winter sports are to proceed forward at this point?
I do not know that. Um, is Mark Becker in the audience and able to advise us on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, they have sent out some limited guidance on, um, how to conduct winter sports, yes.
So are, are we able to, I mean, obviously, some of these sports are more high, uh, risk sports than others. I mean, have they given clear guidance how we're going to have wrestling matches per se?
They, they've not given a lot of specifics. Um, I have set a meeting with our pandemic coordinator and our coaches to, to review, um, the guidance that they've given to us and also look at, you know, on a practical level, our facilities and, and the way we're going to handle things in our school specifically.
Are we hopeful we'll have that type of information prior to the board meeting for formal approval?
Yeah, the meetings are scheduled, uh, later this week, so I, I hope so, yes. We can, we can do that.
I almost feel like we're getting the, the cart in front of the horse here. We're, we're proving schedules without guidance for how any of these seasons are going to be played yet, what facilities are going to handle them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you. It's, uh, it does come at, at you fast. Um, like I said, we just received these from PIA double A. Because the season won't start until December as far as competitions go. Um, but yeah, it is, uh, it is a short turnaround.
I can get a copy of that information.
Yes.
Then may I offer that, since we, it appears as, as though we have some time, if you're going to convene a meeting this week with PIA double A, um, seasons don't get started until December, we can table this for approval at the November twenty-third meeting. Is that what I'm hearing, Mr. Linder?
I'm, I'm fine with moving this forward and getting it to the meeting. I just, I would like to have some greater information before we're asked to officially vote on it at the board meeting.
I would be okay moving it forward to the board meeting for a few weeks and then have Mr. Becker go back and give us that information.
I don't want to slow him down. I know this is coming fast. I just want to make sure that before we say yes to a schedule that we have all the information being asked of us.
I agree. Will do.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Is there any other discussion?
Um, I actually do have a question, and this was regarding our youth wrestling. And is there going to be an opportunity for us to have a place for them to wrestle? Um, in the past, the youth wrestling team had used, uh, the wrestling room after, uh, high school practice. Is that still an option for our little guys?
Uh, I don't know if you're still on, but I believe we're using Wesley for the younger wrestlers this year. So that we're not running into any time conflicts between practices.
Okay.
So we have set aside Wesley as the location for the younger.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any other discussion? Okay, I'm asking the committee.
Hold on, I do have one question. Darcy, when I say little guy is, I mean, little guys, not junior high, but like arcade through.
Yes, I believe we're doing elementary and middle.
Okay.
So it's out of Wesley, so that it is one centralized location and one building need for that to be.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm asking the committee if you are in agreement to bring three point zero one, zero two, and zero three forward to the meeting, uh, in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item four, information items. I have none at this point. Uh, number five is, uh, student, or, yeah, student, instruction and student services questions from the public. Do we have any questions, Linda?
I do not see any hands raised, so I will say no.
Okay, then I move for adjournment of the Instruction and Student Services meeting.
Yes, okay. All right, thank you, Mrs. Winchell.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Uh, we'll start with the roll call.
Mr. Bosco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Mr. Maribito is absent. Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Mrs. Winchell?
Shirley, I'm muted.
Here.
How'd she hear that?
Dr. Roberts?
Here.
And Attorney Sennett.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item one point oh two, approval of the agenda. Take a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Winchell, Finance and Operations Committees.
Okay, Finance and Operations Committee, but before I start perhaps, uh, I feel, uh, as a Zoom now, I understand what the attendees go through. So, Darcy, uh, if you could just move your microphone up a little closer. Uh, everyone else is coming through pretty clear, but you're, you're, you're kind of muffled there, so maybe if you could move your microphone up, uh, we, it, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Gary, I don't have a mic.
Oh, we're short tonight, huh?
I'm off to the side with no mic, so I'll just try to talk louder.
Okay, well, maybe there's an empty mic. Anyhow.
Not right here, Darcy.
Okay, well, let's move forward then. A number of items tonight for approval to move forward to the meeting, uh, on the twenty-third. And I know Erin O'Toole is on the call as well as Mike Gallagher, as I'm sure there might be a few questions concerning some of the items. So if we could start with two point, uh, zero one, which is your approval of the, of the Finance and Operations Committee meeting the twelfth, two thousand and twenty, like to move that, that forward in a form of a motion. Can I have a second?
Second, Mike.
Okay, Mike, uh, all in favor to move that forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to three point zero, McDowell Intermediate High School Train Chiller Agreement. Uh, this was, if you recall, an item that was tabled at the last board meeting for some clarification, and, um, Erin, can you, um, make some comments on this, please?
Yeah, um, as you can see, the legal approval within the agreement, all the adjustments were made, as well as I believe Mr. Linder wanted to know exactly the locations and what units would be worked on and what work specifically would be performed, which is included in the second attachment as well.
Okay, I'll move that forward in the form of a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, further discussion for Erin on the chiller agreement? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. I'll take the next, the three point zero two to three point zero five together. And three point zero two is the revised preliminary Title I service agreement for Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit for this year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And it's, the changes, uh, basically the change here is that the non-public school from Bethel Christian School to Mill Creek Diocese on page two of the agreement. Three point zero three is the school-based access program billing agreement. Three point zero four is the Wilkins Company, Inc., addendum to the agreement. Basically, that's our fire system, since adding Walnut Creek Middle School and Chestnut Hill Elementary School have been added to the agreement. And three point zero five is a T, T-Mobile Project ten million agreement. Uh, this is a, uh, part of the, uh, Mill Creek Education Foundation, MOU, providing hotspots. So we all know some of the issues we've had around the lack of internet. Foundation is helping to, uh, support our families with the provide, providing them hotspots. Um, so, like to move three point zero two, three point zero three, three point zero four, three point zero five forward in a form of a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Gary, I, I have one question on the, the Wilkins agreement, um, and I'm not sure if Erin or Mike can answer this one. But what exactly does monthly monitoring mean? Is that, are they verifying that the lines are actually active? Are they manning the switchboard for calls coming in? I was just kind of curious as to what that term, uh, defined is.
Yeah, so I, I can answer that one. So the monitoring, yeah, it's, it's exactly what you said. If there's a comm failure, uh, if there's a smoke detector that's going bad, if there's another device that's going bad, if there's a pool station that's going bad, we'll get a phone call. Uh, it monitors every X amount of time, and if it doesn't get a signal back, then it'll send an alarm out. Uh, and then also, that also is the security alarm also. If you notice, that's burglar and fire included in there. Um, security alarm, same deal. Set the code at night. Um, if the door, you know, opens or something and somebody doesn't turn off the security alarm, then we, that's the monitoring service that we're doing. So this agreement is adding, I believe, four more services to there, uh, two security systems for the education center in Grandview. Um, and then the security service for Walnut Creek and Chestnut Hill, which were on two other providers before, and we're trying to consolidate them all, uh, to Wilkins, uh, to make it easier for the, the constant monitoring.
It gets, just have one question about that. Um, and maybe this is a conversation at a later date for offline, but if these are voice-over internet protocol or internet-based phone lines and they're being monitored, why can't our IT team have them come into one central monitoring point and have that call come to our team? Or is, were we subcontracting that out because we don't have that technology with that, that staff availability in-house, if all we're doing is monitoring connectivity of phones and points?
Well, they also make the call, I, I mean, it's not always just like a, a robo-call. It's an, it's an actual call coming through if it's a more serious item. So they'll make calls, you know, two AM, three AM, you know, if, if anything happens, I get the call or, uh, Dan Stroop gets the call. So, um, as far as being able to do that in-house, I, I really, I haven't looked into that. Um.
Because we're updating all these fire panels, and my assumption is we're, and I know assumptions always get me in trouble. If we're updating them all to the same model and brand of fire panel, then theoretically, there is a back-of-the-house uh, software that will manage that, all those fire panels into one software, which you can then have come into one point.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. I guess, uh, I, I don't know how it works. I mean, again, I, middle of the night, I don't know if somebody, you know. The other problem is you get a lot of, uh, you know, lower-level calls. Um, I guess it's possible we could look into it.
I just, you know, I'm looking at the monthly line fees for every school at a dollar amount, and I'm just thinking, is that sum of money that's spent in-house? And, because that's a recurring cost that is not insignificant. So, I mean, obviously, we're not in that position at this point, but maybe moving forward, we, we'll add a little bit so we don't keep having this recurring cost.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Good, uh, good conversation there. Uh, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. It's three point zero two, three point zero three, three point four, three point zero five. Uh, all in favor, move that forward, say aye.
Aye.
Three point zero six is the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Act One referendum exception notice. Uh, whereas the adjusted index for the year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year is three point six percent. So Erin, I, I'll turn that over to you just to kind of recap Act One, especially for some of the newer board, board members.
Thanks, Gary. Um, excuse me. So Act One basically states that we will not go above the index. That this resolution states that we're not going to go above the index for next year's budget. As Gary mentioned already, the percentage index percent is three point six percent. That will roughly generate about two million dollars. But this, by approving this referendum exception is, is we're stating that we're not going to go above the index.
Okay, so I'll move that forward, um, in a form of motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none.
What's the difference between the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year rate at three point six versus last year?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Yeah, was there an increase in the index? But it's.
Yeah, three point six is a rather high index. I, I haven't, I mean, in the six years I've been here. I, I haven't, I mean, in the six years I've been here, it hasn't been above that, it hasn't been above 3.2.
Was last year 3.2?
I think last year's was like 2.8, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, there's under three.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that'll be forward. Okay, we'll take 3.07 to 3.10 together. 3.07 is dispersment of funds. Basically dispersment of funds by the administration in December of 2020 and January of 2021. All supporting documentation reports will be provided at the next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting in January of 2021. 3.08 is the Account Payable Report, or Monthly Accounts Payable Report. And 3.09 is the Student Activity Officers for 2021. Basically some updates to those officers from McDowell and from M.I.H.S. And 3.10 is Northwestern PA Chapter of National Tooling and Machining Association Education Foundation Grant that was awarded to us. So like to move the 3.07, 3.08, 3.09, 3.10, 3.10 forward in a form of a motion, may I have a second?
Second, Mike.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Gary, I was reviewing the accounts payable. And there was a, on page 20, there were a significant number of, uh, electrical supply purchases that are quoted as moved. Were they in relation to our, uh, Grandview North Campus?
Erin or Mike, if you could answer that, please?
I would have to look back at that, which I can certainly do. Uh, we did have to do some electrical work, uh, associated with that. And then I know the guys have been doing quite a bit of electrical work in general, just trying to catch up from the summer. So let me, I'll look at that and, uh, I will report back.
What page is that, Mike?
It was on page 20 and it's, uh, uh, under Fund 32 Capital Reserve. So I'm assuming it's, it's related to, uh, one of the buildings, I was guessing there.
Oh, was that, uh, that may have been? Go ahead, Erin. That's our payment for, uh, one of, it's Weber Electric. Yeah, so that, that, Mike, is, um, we rebulbed all of JS Wilson, uh, to go to LED bulbs, um, because we're not going to renovate that school anytime soon. So the idea was get the LED bulbs in there, use all of the bulbs we pull out of JS Wilson for the rest of the renovate them. And then we'll also apply for an energy rebate associated with that. So it was, I, I can't remember the exact number, maybe 32,000, 40,000, something like that, to rebulb all of those. Now, we did the actual work in-house, we just had to buy the bulbs.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I was just asking, because it was a substantial sum. So I was curious as to what it was related to.
That's it.
Excellent, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, uh, so let's move that forward in a, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Okay, 3.11 through, through 3.16 are roof restoration bids. And I'll start with 3.11 is a roof restoration bid for McDowell High School in the amount of $756,508. 756,508. 3.12 roof restoration bid for McDowell Intermediate in the amount of $411,016. 3.13 Walnut Creek Roof Bid of $212,841. 3.14 is a roof bid for Grandview in the amount of $1,944,200. 3.15 is the restoration bid for the bus garage roof in the amount of $213,215. And 3.16 is for the Ridgefield School, total cost of $942,944. Any discuss, uh, I'd like to, um, move that forward in a form of a motion, 3.2, let's see, 3.11, 3.2, 3.13, 3.14, 3.15, 3.16 in a form of a motion. Can I have a second? Okay, discussion, Mike or Erin, can you make some comments on this, please?
Yeah, I'll start, and Mike, you can add, uh, anything that you might want to add in. So this is us redoing the roofs based on our long-term plan that we had from our long-range committee. Uh, we do plan on using A.D.A. or A.W. Farrell to do so. Um, as you can see here, Ridgefield is really the only, or there's a couple new roofs. A couple of them are going to be recoding. This will put all of our roofs under warranty for an extended period of time. And it's just us following our plan that we had laid out to roughly two years ago.
Okay, any discussion, question?
And this is all, I'm sorry, is this all bond work?
Yeah, I'll be paid out of the bond money, yes.
Okay. Is it in line with what was estimated?
It's actually below the estimated cost that we originally had.
Good.
So Erin, I asked you earlier about the Ridgefield roof. The fact is, we kind of lost that one lease a little bit. You had said you're getting a little more different amortization on that building then, or that roof?
Yeah, for Ridgefield, we'll look to amortize that cost over 13 years and try to lease out the other side of the building. Therefore, we could bill out some of this renovation costs related to Ridgefield. But I mean, the first part is, is attracting a student to rent the facility.
Okay.
I have a question for, for probably Mike here, um, or Erin. So when we're looking at these, these numbers, are these full roofs or are these partial? Because obviously when we hear some of these numbers like for Grandview, um, that, that's a sizable number. So the assumption is it's a full roof replacement across the entire building. But then I hear a number from McDowell Intermediate, and it's significantly smaller. McDowell, I mean, it's a huge school. So are we doing the entire roof structure on all the buildings? Or some of the buildings just partial roofs?
Yes, so, uh, Grandview's an entire roof. Uh, we are able to reuse a majority of the insulation there, uh, and the roof drain locations are all good. So that's why it's a roof restoration that we're calling it. But as you can see, we'll get the full 30-year, uh, warranty with an EPDM roof. So Grandview's complete. McDowell, McDowell Intermediate, partial, uh, you're correct. Uh, there, I believe this is the last portion that is not under warranty. All, all, one, two, three, all six of these are out of warranty. Uh, and again, I go back to what Erin was saying, which was the plan two years ago where, uh, it was decided that we would get all roofs under warranty as quickly as possible. So that's what we're doing here. Uh, so McDowell Intermediate, it's a partial roof. McDowell High School is also a partial roof. It's the high part, um, it's the, the H section, uh, which is, uh, some original roof up there. That's eight years out of, uh, out of warranty. Uh, the bus garage is five years out of warranty. That gets a complete new roof, uh, that is at the Education Center. Uh, that's a TPO roof, so that'll get a 20-year warranty. Uh, Walnut Creek will be Truco coating. Uh, if some of you guys remember, uh, two years ago, we coated two-thirds of that. This is the remaining third of that, uh, for another 10 years on that. And then Ridgefield, if they bring a new roof, we had to take the insulation all the way down to the deck. Uh, they core drilled it, uh, and the insulation's all, uh, you know, it's wet. It, it needs to all be replaced. And then the way they lit out the roof drains and the rivets there were not correct. So that's why that one's called a brand-new roof. But we are getting a 30-year warranty on, uh, all four of them, with the exception of the bus garage, which is 20 years. Then Walnut Creek is the Truco coating to get to 10 years. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I think one thing that would be, be helpful for future roof projects, um, if you can just let us know what portion of the roof is being done and, and how much of the roof is left? So we can kind of get a feel for that, because otherwise you look at some of these numbers and you have to make some assumptions as to what we're doing, where we're doing it.
Yeah, and I guess I, I thought he originally had, uh, you know, squares on there, because that's how they measure roofs, and I see that is no longer on there. So, uh, I apologize for that. I'll, uh, I'll make sure that gets in there. And then I can actually, at this point, uh, you know, we have detailed, um, drawings showing, uh, different warranties, especially for the high school and the intermediate, because they have seven and eight different warranties on there. So going forward, I'll include, uh, a little bit more information on that. And I will tell you, he is going to provide actual drawings of that. So it's very clear exactly what he's doing, just to make sure that we're, uh, you know, contract is, uh, you know, everybody is on the same page with what they're, what they're completing.
I appreciate that, Mike. I think that, that little back information is helpful, and especially if, you know, you know, for, this is a long-term project of getting all of our buildings under secure roofs. You know, we know what's coming, you know, what's done. I think that helps a little bit with the, the storyline as opposed to just looking at a, a number at one time and then being shocked. Next year, when we're talking about another roof on the intermediate high school, we will be aware that there's multiple phases.
Absolutely, and I will tell you, we are getting close to the end. Uh, after this year, I think there's only, you know, there's only a couple more small areas, items coming up over the next four to five years. Uh, so we're actually going to be in, in pretty good shape here pretty soon. But yes, I will provide all that information going forward.
Mike, a, a couple of questions, uh, what's the schedule for all this? Is this summer work, are they going to start it? When, when they're going to start?
So I included a schedule in there. Uh, we made sure because of the amount of work that we're giving them, that they have a schedule. And I will say they have, it's in there. Uh, the bus garage is the only one that they asked to start in May, um, which we did not believe would be an issue. Uh, the rest of them all start, uh, you know, June 7th. Grandview may run in August 20th. Uh, but the rest of them will be done, uh, before the, before the kids come back on the 5th or 10th, uh, sometime in there. So that schedules in that packet.
Yeah, I just saw it, thank you. And this is within the, uh, uh, bond estimates even less, so that's a good thing. And how about inspection on these? You know, a couple of years ago, we had some issues, uh, with the installation of a, of a roof that maybe was not what it should have been. Are, are there inspection people in this?
Yes, so I will tell you, especially with like the Truco coating, uh, a manufacturer, third party comes out and reviews the roof, which obviously I go up with them on that. And then we sign all of the paperwork. I have not actually been part of a new EPDM roof. I assume it's the same way where the manufacturer comes out and approves it. Um, you know, third-party outside them, uh, and then they have to fill out a whole bunch of paperwork. We have to sign off of, sign off on it. And then, uh, you know, we get all of the warranty information handed to us. So we will make sure that we get, get it inspected and everything's in, uh, in really good shape. Uh, and I will say, Farrell was awesome. They help us out with everything, they know our roofs very well. Uh, they get us the warranties on all the roofs all the time, they have all the information. So they're a, they're a really good contractor to work with, um, on roofs.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, moving forward, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Thanks, everyone, for your contributions and hard work. Uh, item four, Finance and Operations Committee informational items. We have, um, this evening. Five, Finance and Operations Committee questions from the public. Linda, do we have any questions?
I see no hands raised.
I'm sorry?
I see no hands raised, so I would say no.
Okay, thank you. Item six, Finance and Operations Committee is adjourned. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Okay, now we will be moving into the, uh, committee of the whole meeting. I think we get right into it. So I would thank everybody for, uh, attending this evening. And this is the committee of the whole meeting from Monday, November 9th, 2020, uh, with Mill Creek Township School District, where we are building foundations for life. And we'll open the meeting with roll call.
Mr. Bosco.
Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Here.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Mr. DePlacido.
Here.
Mr. Lindner.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Yeah.
Mr. Maravito is absent this evening. Mr. Winchell?
Here.
Mrs. Winchell?
Here.
Dr. Roberts?
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item 1.02, Executive Session Announcement. An exec, an executive session was held October 28th, 2020 for personnel and November 9th, 2020 for personnel in client privilege matters. And the Aliotta lawsuit. Item 1.03, Approval of the Agenda.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, visitors, uh, we had no one sign up ahead of time. Is there anyone, uh, out there that would like to address the board this evening?
Yes, Mr. Aliotta, that's a hand raise.
Okay.
Mr. Aliotta, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'd like to, uh, state for the record that I did send in my request for five minutes and I have not received a, either approval or denial. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, let me share the uncomfortable and controversial questions or comments which are rhetorical in nature. Uh, my voice is that of a taxpayer and resident of Mill Creek and not as a former school board director or as a litigant in the current legal action against me. Uh, full disclosure, I am part of the community group, MTSD Parent Group. I believe the parents and students, the taxpayers and residents of the district have a right to know the answers to questions addressed to the superintendent, board president, and all school board directors. I have submitted two emails previously to Dr. Roberts, President DePlacido, and all school board directors questioning the district's policy relative to denial of my request to speak for five minutes and the questions I raised in my email dated September 24th, 2020. Both have not been addressed with a written reply or even an oral reply during a board meet, a public board meeting. Is this the manner in which public elected and appointed officials respond to taxpayers, parents, or even students? As far as my request to speak for five minutes, simple question, who and how was that determined? And why was it not in writing to me? As, as elected, uh, or appointed public officials, uh, to respond to questions from the public, is that considered malfeasance in public office when the public officials do not reply, uh, to a question from the public? On another topic, let me read from District Policy 827, Conflicts of Interest Section, Improper Influence. No person shall offer or give to a board member, public employee, or a nominee, or a candidate for the board, or a member of his or her immediate family or a business with which he or she is associated, anything of monetary value, including a gift, loan, political contribution, reward, or promise of future employment based on the offerers or the donors' understanding that the vote, official action, or judgment of the board member. Uh, each and every school board director has completed a statement.
Thank you, Mr. Aliotta. Excuse me, your time is up.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, there is, Terry Brink. Terry Brink, could you, uh, provide your address, please, before you start speaking?
My name is Terry Brink. I own a property at 719 Ruth Avenue in Mill Creek.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I am, I will mention that I am also on Harbor Creek School Board. I am a resident of Harbor Creek, but own property in Mill Creek. I also sit on the Erie County Tech School Board. And what I would like to ask of your school board members is that they give strong consideration to the renovation of the Erie County Tech School. It has been, I have sat on my board for 14 years and we have been waiting desperately for some sort of resolution. And basically, it seems as though Mill Creek is holding up this entire process on whether or not we can go forward with a renovation for the Erie County. on whether or not we can go forward with a renovation for the Erie County Tech School. I am not going to say that just Harbor Creek kids are losing out or just Mill Creek kids because it's 11 school districts whose kids cannot get proper education because the supplies, the materials, the school building itself is in such disrepair, the different mechanical items are in such disrepair that they are not even usable for half of the the items. I think that you, as a school board, need to put much more consideration into voting this passage of of the renovation and get this done. It has been far too long. It is costing the school districts much more money every time we come to look at it. There currently is a $600,000 bill that's going to need to be paid in order to just get this through BIU. And if you guys aren't going to vote for it, why should other school districts pay this? You may have extra money, but littler school districts do not. And for us to have to worry about paying extra bills is just really an untenable situation for every other school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. Okay, we'll move along. Item three, Superintendent's Court. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, President Deplacido. On a superintendent's report, we have six items. One for discussion and action, five for action. First item, item 3.01, McDowell Yearbook. This item is brought to you for approval.
Take a motion.
Agreements on.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 3.02, the committee of the whole November personal report. Box you get for action.
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion, Janine.
I would like to amend that.
We need a second. We need a second. Third and a fourth. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now discussion.
To separate the items that are in that report. One is related to resignations and one is related to academics, and I'd like to separate those, please.
Do you want to separate them by building? There's one heading, Mill Creek Education Center, and a second heading, Wesley. Would that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, you made a motion, Charlie?
Second.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Second.
Second, Chris. Oh, she's asking for separation. We already have a motion, second.
Okay. So we have to vote twice?
Correct.
Okay, so we can handle the Mill Creek Education Center first and then Wesley. Okay. Dr. Roberts, is that okay?
That is okay. Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll take a vote then on Mill Creek Education Center. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Now we'll take Wesley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Motion. All right, we'll do a roll call on Wesley.
Okay. Mr. Winchell.
No.
Mrs. Winchell.
No.
Mr. Busco.
No.
Ms. Capabianca.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mr. Deplacido.
Yes.
Mr. Lindner.
No.
Ms. McClintock.
Yes.
Mr. Maravito is absent. That gives us word for.
Motion fails. Yeah, motion fits. All right. Okay, that handled 3.02.
Thank you, board. Next item, item 3.03, Directive Human Resources Job Description for Action.
Take a motion?
I'll make a motion, Janine.
Second, Gary.
Thank you. Discussion.
Now, I'd just like to say thanks, pretty in-depth job description for a very important role in our district moving forward. So thanks for all the people that worked on that. I know we got a little help from IU5, our partners there, so we appreciate that. So very important moving forward on this position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
It's a well thought out.
Yeah, very detailed, very detailed, very nice job. Anything else? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number 3.04. This item is up for discussion in-person learning, a return to full-time or face-to-face in-person learning in grade scale through five. This item is up for discussion with a recommendation from the superintendent today. Okay, if I may. Good evening again, board, parents, teachers, staff, school leaders, students. To date, our students have been in school for 10 weeks. This is the 10th week. Incidentally, today also marks the 90th day that I've been in this role. And given the time that has elapsed, we are certainly at a critical juncture today as we have continuously evaluated our current instructional model with considerations to make adjustments that benefits the students we serve and the adults who are in service of our students. In arriving at my recommendation today, a recommendation which I landed on in collaboration with the members of the district's core leadership team, you will hear some emphasis on the strength of our cadre of outstanding teachers, staff, and school leaders. Teachers who continue to go above and beyond each and every day. My recognition, our recognition of the absolute necessity for us to hold ourselves and to be held accountable to providing world-class education to our students, as well as hearing some expressions today of empathy and gratitude to everyone, especially our parents, teachers, students, and leaders, our community members, and you, the board, for your understanding of my vision and commitment to ensure, amongst other things, the health and safety of all of our students and adults. Yes, we have continuously reiterated the importance for us to be nimble with our return to school and our return to play plans, to have a willingness to pivot when necessary, and to do so by grounding 100% of the decisions we make, of course, with your invaluable input, but grounding those decisions, incredible data. As additional core leadership team, we are in receipt every day of hundreds of written communications and have had many conversations about our current instructional model, the AB hybrid model. Throughout this time of deliberation about this pertinent decision point, our five district beliefs or values continues to be a guiding force. But the three beliefs and values that are more connected to this current decision point are, one, the fact that families play an important and critical role in student success. Two, each student is important and should be treated with dignity and respect. And three, all students should have the opportunity to participate in academic programs that are relevant and rigorous. Our goal as a district's core leadership team is to continue to give each of you visibility into our current reality and the reality of our teachers, staff, and leaders, and to the extent possible, the reality of our students. Parents and community members, it is important to remember that on this particular issue, our questions of what is the most important and impactful instructional model during this time continues to be raised. When should we tweak, when should we adjust, or when should we change our model? It's important for you to remember that we are not opponents in this matter, nor should we allow an absolutist approach to guide this decision. We, as district administrators, as teachers, staff and school leaders, the board of directors, parents in the community, are truly in partnership, and we ought to keep that at the top of our minds. We should remain in this partnership, and in doing so, we are destined to land on the best decision for students, and this allows us to truly remain stronger together. As a community, and the community that I speak of is Erie County, we are now experiencing the highest daily numbers of COVID-19 positive cases. The increase in the PCR rate in this community is concerning because the school district and our schools is a microcosm of the larger Mill Creek Township and Erie County community. As of today, our current Erie County PCR data is at 99.6%, I believe, and a daily rate of about 79, which gives us the designation of substantial. At our last board meeting on October 26th, we brought into this space the discussion of a return to full-time learning for students in grade scale through five to take effect November 30th. Today, after months deliberation, we have arrived at a recommendation, and I wish to provide you with context and a timeline which will give you some visibility into my decision-making. Please know that our goal is to anchor our discussions and eventual recommendation in a multifactorial approach. On Friday, October 30th, we administered a survey for teachers and parents of students in grade scale through five, and we closed the said survey on Wednesday, November 4th. Let me shift the timeline a little bit. As a part of the consideration, on November 2nd, an initiative led by our Assistant Superintendent Darcy Mosley solicited the support of our Department of Health Striker Team, and they conducted a walkthrough assessment and provided recommendations to the Mill Creek Township School District's leadership and pandemic team. As a part of their recommendation, they recommended that we purchase desk shields for each of our K-12 students. We currently have 2,600 students enrolled in grade scale through five, which necessitates a purchase of the set amount, 2,600 of those shields, at a projected cost of approximately $300,000. Assistant Superintendent Darcy Mosley, or pandemic team coordinator Crystal Crosby, and our head of security Nate Spiker represented us on those visits with the Department of Health Striker Team. On Thursday, November 5th, our district administrative team reviewed, discussed, and interpreted the survey data from parents and teachers. And in keeping with our commitment to enlist the voices of every stakeholder group, again, we will always enlist the voices of individuals who any critical decision will impact. On Friday, November 6th, I spoke with each of our K-5 school leaders in order to gain their invaluable input prior to making my recommendation. Quick high-level context around our survey data, and members of the core team will respond and intervene as necessary. I like a scale type survey numbered one through five, with the number one designated as extremely comfortable, and the number five designated as extremely uncomfortable was administered to both K-5 parents as well as our teachers. Our parent survey had a really strong response rate of 1,816 respondents to which that was 70%. A significant percentage of parents fell on the fours and fives of this survey. Remember, the fours and fives extremely comfortable. Indicating that they're not only comfortable, but they feel strongly about a return to full-time face-to-face instruction on November 20, on November 30th, sorry, 2020. Thinking of our logistical and operational considerations, considerations such as the impact on transportation, we also posed the question to parents to solicit information with regards to how many students are riding the bus. 54.8% of our students and their parents, the parents indicated, sorry, that their children utilize MTSD bus service. 52.3% of our parents listed the quality of instruction and education as a major concern for them, and 34.4% listed COVID safety as their primary reason for their selection in terms of their response to the data. The teacher survey data. Again, a lot of strong showing in terms of the response rate. The survey had 278 K-5 teachers responding, which is an 85% teacher response rate. In response to the question of what timeframe they prefer for four days of on-campus increasing face-to-face instruction, 32.4% of our teachers indicated that they are not comfortable with a return to full-time face-to-face instruction for the duration of this school year. 11% of our teachers indicated that a November 30th date sits well with them. 24.5% of our teachers indicated that a January 4th date is their preference, and 27% of our teachers indicated that a February 1st date is their preference. Looking at a tabulation of the data shared by our teacher responses, one conclusion is that the majority of our K-5 teachers, at 51.5%, indicated that their preference and their comfort with a return to increase our full-time face-to-face learning should be no sooner than January 4th and possibly February 4th at the commencement of our second semester. In response to the questions about the biggest decision factor with regards to a return to parties on campus, 25.7% of our teachers said that the quality of instruction and the timing of the return weighed heavily on their decision. 48.6% stated that COVID safety and the safety and health and well-being of themselves essentially is a consideration for them. And 12.2% stated that social distancing weighed heavily into their decision. Board, please note that our substitute teacher pool is significantly small. As a matter of fact, one of the most recent updates that we received as a core team is that I think we have 11 substitute teachers in our pipeline to serve the district. Of course, having an adequate pool of substitute teachers is a critical part of our contingency plan in order for us to ensure continuity of a robust instructional delivery model just in case there is absence of our teachers. If there is a compromise, we are strongly recommending a January 4th return to increase face-to-face learning. Teachers were also given the option of a context box for them to provide detail or narrative responses in their survey, and members of the core team at your asking and request can certainly weigh in to provide additional context. I'm fully aware that my recommendation today will not meet the needs of every parent, every student, and every teacher. And in the spirit of transparency, it does not sit well with me. I have vacillated between two decision points. I've done so in the last 24 hours, several times in the last 24 hours. I've lost much sleep, although you probably couldn't tell because I still look as healthy and handsome as ever. But since September 21st, 2020, our school district has registered 45 positive COVID cases as of 5:00 PM today. It is my recommendation in collaboration with my dynamic core team to the board of directors that we continue to elevate the education, safety, and unwell-being of 100% of our students. It is certainly prudent for us to use a phrased approach to a return to full-time in-person face-to-face learning by prioritizing the student population in grade scale through five for a number of reasons. Our public health data shows that the students within these age ranges are least susceptible contracting the coronavirus or COVID-19. As a matter of fact, there is a national rate of less than the 2.5% infection. With this public health data showing less than 3% of children under age 10 having contracted COVID-19, it bodes very well for us with an eventual return to face-to-face in-person learning. I offer that we acknowledge the concerns of our K-5 teachers, our parents, and school leaders, but certainly the individuals who are in the arena doing this work, our K-5 teachers and school leaders. And a significant number of our parents also have shared that they would prefer to have a full-time in-person face-to-face learning module after January 4th. January 4th is the first day of the 2021 calendar year, and I think it presents great opportunities for us to have time to look at our fastly growing public health data, as well that it gives us an opportunity to put a lot of solid and much As well, it gives us an opportunity to put a lot of solid and much necessary logistical plans and operational items in place. The eventual decision should be contingent upon our positive COVID-19 rate two weeks prior to January nineteen, sorry, January fourth, twenty twenty-one. Board, parents, community members, I am pleading for your strategic patience. As we balance our desire and quite frankly, the necessity for us to return our students to a more face-to-face instruction time. Regardless of our current position and desire. Now is the time for us to continue to be strong regardless of what we're feeling and the spaces in which we sit. I will end my recommendation to the board with a quote from. The United Nations Peace Awards winner and Rock and Roll Hall of Famer Robert Nestomari, also known as Bob Marley. That really speaks to how I am feeling and the place in which I'm sitting and experiencing. And how many of you are feeling at this time? And the quote says that you never know how strong you are. Until strong is your only choice. Being strong at this moment, on this day, November ninth, twenty twenty, in the height of a pandemic with rising COVID-19 positivity rates. Where we sit in very different positions. And more than fifty-one percent of our teachers who have to serve our students, students daily. Are pleading with us for a delayed response, a January fourth or later response. I thank you for receiving my recommendation. And I thank you on behalf of all of the teachers, staff, and school leaders who are serving our students daily. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. That was one of the most well-informed presentations I've heard in a long time. Thank you very much for that.
I have a question about the, yes, great presentation and very informative for me. Uh, the desk shields, is that a mandatory item or is that a recommendation? We're less than six feet. It's mandatory, the health department will not give us approval to go back without a desk shield?
Yeah, as we toured, that was one of the things that was identified as non-negotiable for us because we're going to be within the six feet. We obviously can't social distance so that we would have either some kind of shield. It doesn't have to, I'm sorry, I said three sides. Doesn't necessarily have to be the three-sided shield. They suggested, you know, we could do. A multitude of different ways to have shields around each child in their workspace, but that we needed to do something.
Non-negotiable for us or non-negotiable for them?
It was indicated to us as a non-negotiable.
Indicated.
Okay, like we're totally wordsmithing as we walk through every room. The, the one recommendation, I guess I would say that they came up with every time as we traveled through was that we needed to have. Some type of area shielded off for our students if they were not going to be able to be six feet apart within a classroom. Um, they commended us for all of the work that we have done so far and that our rooms were set up, you know, well and sufficient. But when they looked at our enrollment numbers and what that would look like in a classroom. Um, saw the additional like bookshelves, other types of furniture that were in there. Their clear recommendations were. That we needed a shield for every child in their space, particularly because of eating. We do not have enough space. Um, you know, the six-feet recommendation for eating time is not something that waivers. Um, so you know, having that shield around them when they are unmasked for mass breaks and eating is, you know, a best practice, I guess. Now, in the end of the day, um, you know, I think the health department has said several times that it is a LEA decision, a school district's choice. Um, but that they, their recommendation, I guess you would say is that. Um, it is not something that we should not invest in for every child. We're bringing them back and they're less than six feet apart.
So that twenty-six hundred number, that was just K through five then?
That is correct. And I would need Aaron, um, I, I know Dr. Roberts cited three hundred thousand. I, I have not been involved in the ordering piece Aaron has.
To piggyback on Jason's comment, for twenty-six hundred students. That's how many are currently in person in the AB hybrid where that is the total number of K through five students because. You know, there is a step here that we are still missing. Once we have the conversation about the recommendation is how many parents are coming? And how many parents are keeping their kids home? Because that number of how many are going to be in the classroom is going to be wildly dependent on final agreements, just like we. Had when we went to the hybrid. There was, you know, there's an assumption that we could have them all. So that is. That with the twenty-six hundred numbers, that's every single student returns.
I need Aaron to answer that. He used the number twenty-six hundred. My guess is.
That's our total level of K five.
And right now we have, uh, what, some, almost four or five hundred K five. I think the majority of our. Um, virtual learners are the K five level.
Um, that may have shifted. I can give you the exact numbers here in one second though.
Virtual learners of K five.
So an unmasked situation where they're eating either breakfast or lunch. We can't take half the class out and put them, you know, distance them like we do in six through twelve?
Um, we talked about, we would obviously have to have, um, that's one of the recommendations from the health department's team that we would have to have alternate locations. So that half of them would remain in a classroom, half would go to another location to eat their lunch. The problem is that you run into two logistical, you know, planning pieces there. One, um, who gets the space when? And so to stagger spaces, um, you know, your lunch periods then spread out. Uh, that was one of the challenges that the elementary principals articulated, uh, as well as staffing. Because then you need people to staff those, you know, lunch periods in terms of your educational assistance with the classroom. Lunch dining students and the alternate location. So those were two of the, the concerns relative to the lunchroom.
Uh, before we get further into discussions, uh, I think we need a motion. Dr. Roberts has made a motion or a request for a motion from the board.
That would be then three oh five, right, revise return play, wouldn't it? This is.
No, this is.
A return play will be athletics.
That's a, that's the pool. We're in the right spot.
Well, he's looking for a motion to reconvene school January fourth as opposed to November thirtieth, which is what we talked about last time.
That's good. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, now discussion.
I like the, what concerns me of November thirtieth is the uptick. And the holidays coming up and the potential of families and out-of-towners getting together. January makes sense to me in that respect and also with more of the winter activities happening indoors. Not that I'm off work. I fully support going back to school, uh, for K to five. Every day, but with everything happening in that month, you know, and then. Like I said, with the holidays coming up, return to sports coming up, indoor sports. And not only that, the teachers and the staffing problem. And I don't know legislatively about getting all the, um. You know, the providers, if that can be done by the thirtieth. So I, to me, I, I support that date after the beginning of the new year.
I, I support the date as well. I mean, I'd rather have them back sooner, but I understand all the information that you presented and I, I appreciate that. Um, my, my concern is what are we looking at then? For our middle school and high school, we're putting, we had at one point bought the thirtieth and, and the fourth for the older kids. When will our older, what do we have as a projected date to bring our older kids back at this point? I mean, if we look after February, they've gotten two months of school in person. And I, I, I really think it's going to affect especially the middle school, all of them. Um, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about this delay for our six through twelve kids.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great offer. I, I think if we, you know, once we return our K five students, if the circumstances allows us to do that. It, it gives us somewhat of a proof point. Um, and I believe that maybe two to three weeks. Which would get us to the second semester, which might be enough time for the core team and I to review the data and say. It's probably prudent for us to get our six, eight students back. It's challenging for us to think about. A date for us to return our students in grades nine through twelve for a number of reasons, right? One being, uh, just looking at the public health data. The, the young people who are between the ages of, I think it's ten and eighteen. We've seen a significant uptick in the COVID-19 positivity rates, but it's not off of the table. We are committed to bringing every single student back in full-time face-to-face learning. Uh, but I just ask that we ground that in, in data, but K through eight. I can see a space where we have them back January fourth and February fourth.
I would, and I agree with you regarding everything in data. I would also like to see, because we keep referencing the uptick in cases, which is very relevant. But I also think we need to look at the severity in these cases and how many of these kids are hospitalized are. So many of them at that age also have rather mild symptoms.
Yeah.
And so I would like to know what is, what is, what is the data behind their hospitalizations, God forbid their death? But this is the information we need, um, because we, we need to see a whole picture, not just uptick in cases. An uptick in cases only gives us part of the picture.
Yes, ma'am.
Carry on, Janine's point. I think. You know, the teachers and the students have been working very hard on this model, this hybrid model, but. I think what we need to recognize, we need to recognize that parents have been working extremely hard as well. There's tremendous parent frustration out there. Everyone is doing their best. I know that everyone is trying their hardest. I think the most important thing that we can provide for our K to five or middle school and high school. Need to offer them hope that we have a timeline, that we're going to say that this will, this will be our proof point when we're going to get there. Sounds like we're getting close to one for our K to five, but we still have our middle, we still have our high school. We need to put a timeline and say, if we cross this threshold, we talk about your level. If we cross this threshold, we talk about the next level. We need to provide that hope point to our families. That they are going to come back, that they are going to get relief, that we are going to get some normalcy. Um, and I think that, you know, as we're talking about shields, we're talking about logistics, I think that. We have a lot of work on the K to five, but if you're talking two to three weeks for our next grades, I mean, we need to be talking about, we need shields in the middle schools. What is the logistics for the bus look like? Who's actually coming and committing to us? Because that's going to change our numbers for shields, bus routes, a lot of things. I mean. I think that we all would like to be sooner, but I think that as long as we can give parents hope and a timeline. I think that's the most important thing we can prove tonight.
Thank you so much. That action that we will take in certain areas, we will commit to, um, providing our parents, um, with a timeline. Um, which really speaks to giving them some visibility into what we're thinking. But again, we are really committed, um, to bringing our students back in full-time face-to-face learning. Uh, we, we currently have about eleven hundred and ninety-four of our students in the district who are in virtual education. Which is about twenty percent. And although a lot of our teachers are doing an outstanding job, even the most robust virtual program cannot supplant. In-person face-to-face instruction. And so we get it. Um, so it's this balance of. How do we make sure that we are logistically and operationally sound? Ensuring the safety and well-being of our teachers, many of whom have legitimate medical concerns. As well as how do we hold space for our parents who are incredibly frustrated? We empathize with them. As parents who have one child and who, much less parents who have multiple students in our district, you know, when we, we read about, when we read their emails and. And see their frustrations, it, it's heartbreaking, quite frankly. And we want to do something. So I appreciate you, your sort of guidance around, let's. At least have an effective publication strategy to give our parents hope. And we will do that and not just hope, but give them a strategy that we will put in place.
Thank you. One other thing that I think that I hear a lot out there, and just so that we are clear as a, as a board and to the community. We are looking at four-day face-to-face instruction. While also maintaining our virtual instruction for families who are not comfortable at that level. That is the direction of your recommendation, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I know how.
Honor the odds.
Um, Mike, this is Shirley speaking. Um, I would agree completely with everything that has been said. Um, I would also agree that it would make sense for us to. Purchase the shields for the middle school level also so that. Our decision for when to bring them back is not based on. When the shields will be available to us. As long as we're ordering them, we might as well order and. The decision then would be based on more relevant things than when do we have the material for them to come back.
Six through eight is not eating in their classroom. Do they require the shields?
Um, we would essentially, based on our conversations, have a shield for every child that will kind of travel with them. So I think. You know, I don't know that we would move them to the cafeteria. That wasn't a specific, um, topic. Remember, we didn't do the strike team visits yet with the middles. This was focused K five. Um, certainly the cafeteria and bus will be big topics when we do those with. With them for middles and secondary. Uh, but I would imagine based on what they had shared, um, you know, about the whole lunch concept. Um, that they would have some feedback for us. I don't know that right now they're fully aware of how we operate lunch. Uh, but that would certainly be a, a topic of our next round of visits when we get to the middle and secondary level.
But at the middle school level, wouldn't it also be true that they would be closer to three feet apart? As opposed to six feet apart and those shields would be recommended?
Yes, I think you are correct, Shirley. They will want the shields because. If we bring all of our middle school students back in their classrooms, they will not be six feet apart. Um, and, and I actually like the idea, given the timeline that I think Aaron outlined for us for. Uh, receiving the shields for our elementary school students, which was a three to four week ship. Um, I think that, you know, buying what we can now, um, is the best practice. Although, Aaron, I know you said this morning that they can't service us fully at this time. It'd have to kind of be a phased approach based on the number and their availability of product.
I think we'll be all right as long as the date is in January. I don't, I don't see that being a problem. So we could probably order them all at one time.
So to Ms. McClintock's point earlier, if we get K through five back, it'd be in January, six through eight. Any appetite for bringing K through eight? The data points that we're going to learn from K through five over three weeks. I think at some point, at some point, we have to, you know, pull the Band-Aid off and say, it's time for us to get back and learn. It may be something to consider instead of just K through five, K through eight, January fourth, but then I would offer the same dilemma that we have on a November thirtieth return. That's right after the holiday and January fourth is even a longer holiday with more travel and more exposure and more family interaction. So if we say January fourth and then we start to get close to that date and then we get nervous again. And we're just pulling parents back and forth.
So we've had some discussions and I think, uh. But your question is, Dean, it, it makes me think of. We can certainly get the, the ball rolling by at least administering a survey, which was one of our first steps to the six to eight parents. And, um, and teachers. Because we did talk about, I know that our secondary teachers were wondering about whether, when they were going to have input. Into the return to full-time face-to-face, so they wanted to have a survey. So we'll get the ball rolling by doing that. And yeah, there's certainly an appetite to return K through eight. Uh, so. I would ask that maybe we revisit this conversation, um, at the twenty-third meeting and a meeting on the twenty-third. Gives us only about a week or two. Yep.
Okay. Can you share the survey results with us also?
Absolutely. This survey results are the K eight.
The.
No, I'm the six eight.
The, the, um, survey that you spoke of tonight.
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Dr. Roberts, uh, the pandemic board leader would like to speak.
Yes.
Crystal?
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes.
Hi, I was, um, just going to comment that as far as six to eight and the high school level goes for the shields, we will need. Those individually as well. And one of the pieces that we'll have to look at is. The shields that we were able to secure for elementary are extremely heavy, which is great for that age group. But what we have to consider logistically, six to eight in high school is that they travel classroom to classroom. And we may have to look at a different shield that, um, may be able to travel individually with those children and students because. Logistically, they are not going to be able to be moved. And then we would have to look at the cleaning piece. So they would additionally need cleaned every class before a new student would sit at them. So that is something that additionally we will need to consider when we're looking at that piece.
So can we not have? The shields stationary? So students are transporting the shields at grade six through eight or six through twelve?
Yeah, at the high school level, we could. Yeah, at the high school level, we could look at a different shield that each student would have individually and be able to carry with them, um, which would be different than the ones we had at elementary school, which is very fitting for that level. But um would be something different at the high school level, because then we would have to look at cleaning them in between every single class, which we know um is a separate issue.
My question is though, can we not have the shields stationary? So.
Oh, we can, but then we have to clean them every time before the next student comes in and sits at them.
Thank you. Are we cleaning the desks?
We are.
Six through twelve.
But if, if you saw, if you saw the shield, I put a picture of it up, but if you saw it in person, um, it would take a considerable amount of time, depending on how many students are in each class, to appropriately wipe it down between every class. And we know that the students can't wipe them down, so that it just is an additional piece that needs considered.
Do we know of any other schools that are currently using the shield that we could investigate or research?
I'm aware of one school district in Ohio that is using a portable shield that is like a trifold that collapses. And the students, uh, this is for high school grades nine through twelve, they carry it from class to class with them to avoid the cleaning. That's the only school district I'm aware of, but I, I don't, we really haven't talked face shields with other districts or like desk shields with other districts.
Yeah, I guess my point is younger kids are not susceptible to.
Well, I would say just, you know, I mean, the one thing on behalf of our staff, yes, the students are are not, you know, seeing is is great of effects, but you, you still want that barrier of protection when they're not going to be six feet apart for any droplets that might be shared. So um, you know, I think that the shields and the recommendation from the Department of Health for them is to, you know, protect the students themselves, as well as the students near them and and kind of keep their space more contained. But still being able to be visible.
The safety space.
The CDC recommendation is still six feet. It has not moved from the six feet recommendation for social distancing.
Do you have any, how is Harvard Creek or I don't remember, like Ericor uh northeast? Do you, are they six feet apart in their classrooms?
I would imagine that, yes, they are. I mean, I'm going to.
Well, it's all, I mean, it is, it's a six-foot recommendation, except when it's, you know, the school can reconsider it when it is not feasible and it's negatively impacting the educational process. So I mean, it is a recommendation, but there's that caveat. So maybe they, they decided, who knows what they decide.
But I would think there'd be a little more investigation before we.
Yeah.
But anything beyond what we need.
The team has shared with us that there is nobody um in the county that has broken the six feet and not had the additional barrier. It is not a recommendation and they don't support anyone moving forward with not either going with six feet or if you're less than six feet, having the barrier per individual student.
Because I think it's always a good piece of data for us to remember too that we are much larger, we are the largest school district um that is doing face-to-face instruction. So um, you know, that, that's a good data point for us, because yes, we can compare ourselves to other districts and what they're doing to make it work and how they're addressing it. But um, you know, we, we are much larger in scale. And so for us, you know, it does look a little different. We've had other local districts that are back um more than uh, you know, we are in a hybrid model. But they're able to achieve six feet by taking teachers and reallocating them by certification area and using empty spaces and and re kind of configuring things to be additional classroom spaces to have more classrooms and sections available to keep their numbers down. We don't have some of those kinds of options, because we utilize all of our space and then some. So there's just some unique challenges, and that doesn't mean it's not doable, but it just means that sometimes it's difficult for us to look at other districts and say, well, they're doing this, because it, it may work for them. Um, it may not for us.
I have a question more logistical about shields and not thinking uh, I'm thinking K to five. So from a logistics standpoint, if we take this room, for example, what is the benefit of putting a shield at John, putting one at me, putting one at Jeanine, putting one at you? Why don't we just put one at John, one at Jeanine? I'm in between two shields. Why do I need a shield? Do we have to put a shield at every single desk? Or do we just need to logistically make sure that each student is separated with six feet of distance? You know, and then, you know, from a fairness standpoint, maybe move the shields around every other week so that not every kid is in a shield every single week. I mean, if you look at the way we stagger the shields, there's no benefit of me and John both having a shield. He's in a shield and Jeanine's in a shield. I'm effectively in a shield.
Good point.
I mean, that, that might be something that we talk about, wait, we look at how these rooms are set up and, you know, obviously, we don't, you're going to want to move them occasionally. You don't want same children to feel like they're the ones in the shield now.
You know, the, the one thing that is on my mind. Go ahead.
So I was just going to say, um, I don't think that that would be supported by the DOH, given our rounding with them. But I also don't think that you could at that point pick or choose which students you give shields to and which you don't, which becomes a different issue.
But the DOH is, it's a recommendation. It's a strong recommendation.
Yeah, it was a strong recommendation for it to be individualized for every child.
I thi- I think another thing that um warrants thinking about bringing people back, bringing the students back at a later date. Uh, I don't know that we could bring them back by the end of the month anyway. We got two of our schools um basically shut down. And I, you know, this, bringing back to the uh without further data and without hopefully further progress in a, in a means of, of preventing, curing, whatever the disease, I think it's just going to go back and forth uh between uh in-house versus virtual. And to me, the, the ultimate solution is virtual until we find something that can prevent this. I mean, it doesn't take much for an entire school to go down. And I think it's just going to go on and on and not through anybody's fault, it's just going to happen. And it's, it's going to be tough on the teachers, tough on the parents, and, and of course, the student. So I, I'm not saying any, anything is the solution, because nobody knows what the solution is. But I think waiting a little bit uh before we do that and getting some more help uh on the medical side, hopefully, and, and other uh data, I think, I think is good move.
John, you make some good points. The other side of that, however, is that most of the, many of the cases are a result of students socializing outside of school as opposed to having problems in school. Um, I, I don't know how you stop that from hap- happening. And I think um, going into the next month, what is going to work against us is families traveling. And there are so many states, it's a growing list of states that are on the quarantine list. It's, it's not the actual time in school that is usually the problem. The problem is what they're doing outside of school. And I don't know how we are going to get around that.
Well, and bringing it into the school. I mean, you're right, there, there's no, uh, you can't put everybody in a bubble. And it's just going to happen for one reason or another. And it's just uh, very, very, uh, very depressing. But uh, I think waiting is, is the proper move at this point. And I think at some point, we may have to consider all virtual, just to get beyond this.
I, I don't think we're, I, I, I disagree, John. I mean, we consider, we say we're going to consider all virtual to get beyond it. This is a virus. It's not going to go away. So, I mean, and to take that, to take that approach means that we might as well go virtual tomorrow and, you know, why, why go out with a hybrid? I, I, we need to get our kids back to school. As Shirley said, they are outside. The high schoolers are driving together to school. Um, they're seeing the teachers, maybe not every day, but every other day. So they're still being exposed to one another. Um, and, and their education is suffering and it's suffering greatly. And those parents that want to bring their kids, want to leave their kids in virtual, we are offering that option. Maybe if we do offer it, we say, once you're virtual, then you're virtual for the rest of the year. So we have our herd numbers. And we can possibly social distance enough of them to stay home, but their education is suffering.
I don't know how much longer the students, the teachers and the parents can do this. I mean, this has been very, very hard. Ten weeks for all involved.
Oh, it's been, I mean, let's go all the way back to March. I mean, it's been that long.
You're right.
And our teachers have done a great job. Um, we, you know, we, we've heard some of their expressed concerns. And, you know, I, and I, I don't know how some of them are doing it, given what, what we learned the other day. But I do know our students, and not for fault of trying, are having a hard time. And we're going to send them out there to compete. And I said it before, it's not an even playing field, because there are schools that are back full-time. And our kids are going to compete with those kids for college spaces, for scholarships and whatnot. And we're doing them a disservice not getting them back. That's my opinion.
Okay, we've had a pretty lively discussion. Uh, we have a motion and a second on uh Dr. Roberts' recommendation at our.
Hey, John, can I just ask Dr. Roberts a question?
Sure.
Uh, Dr. Roberts, talk about the survey, six through eight, um, for the stakeholders, teachers, parents. Um, what's your timeframe for that? Is that something that can be out and back? So you can give us at least an update, maybe at this month's board meeting, just to kind of start the ball rolling on that?
I think we have the survey instrument in place. We can make that happen, yes. We will have the survey administered and have an update for you by the November twenty-third meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, anything else?
I think I'll just press updated. Information. I mean, you know, we're already getting the numbers from Mike. Keep that information. All good information. Mr. Center, could you read the motion, please?
Yeah, the motion is for a return to school on January fourth for students K through five.
Anything else?
Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you. Next item on the superintendent's report, item three point zero five, uh, revised return to play plan for the board's approval.
Yeah, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, discussion.
Dr. Roberts, can you give us a little update on what this revision is?
Would you like me to do that?
Yes, thank you.
Um, Ms. Winchell, this is the board's request. Attorney Senate and I worked together to revise the last page to put in the indoor and outdoor facility language to address the pool um concerns that we have discussed at a few meetings um prior. Uh, so this, um, you know, outlines that the pool facilities can be utilized by outside agencies or organizations that are comprised of the majority of Mill Creek Township School District students as participants. They will be permitted limited access, not to exceed two days a week, dependent upon pool availability, disinfecting and mitigation needs. Uh, they must submit a copy of their return to play plan to Mr. Becker. Um, they must meet with him to review their plan. They must follow um our requirements. And they just need to be aware that should any of our own district events need to take precedent, that that takes precedent over their pool use, which are all things that we have standardized as requirements. Um, all of our sport teams have to provide their return to play plan, review it with Mr. Becker, follow our requirements. And obviously, whenever an outside agency is using our facilities, our, um, you know, needs come first. Meaning if our swim team needs a practice, that takes precedent over a missed or epic event.
I know that this has been a very, it's been on our agenda for several meetings now. And I appreciate all of the time and effort that has gone into it by so many people in our district. And, and the patience of the swimmers and their parents and so forth. Um, this sounds like it, it makes sense and it is a very good compromise.
The other discussion? I have some comments. Um, I have, I have trouble with this for a couple of reasons. Number one, it's, it, it isn't, we're changing our entire plan for, for outside entities that make a charge, they're theoretically making a profit on, on these clubs that come in. We're putting our custodians and others for additional work that's required for this. And I, you know, majority of MTD students, well, that means that there might not be all MTD students. And I don't think it's, it's that we make this particular laser type uh agreement with two teams or two entities in effect, uh, when there are a lot of them out there. And I think we're going to get requests for all of them. They're all unique. I know there's a pool involved, but now there's going to be a basketball court. There's going to be something. And I think it opens us up to, to future uh requests like this, that we'll, that we'll be dealing with. And I don't think right now is the time we need to deal with this. If it's important that these uh entities uh are doing good, which they are, I mean, no doubt about that, why don't we bring it into in-house? And then we won't have this kind of, or discussion. Um, and I, now is not the right time to do it, obviously, but I think it should be brought in. And I don't think we should be changing our entire plan for two entities, three entities, whatever it is, lasering on the pool. I understand the issue. But there are a lot of issues out there regarding sports. And I just don't think this is, this is what we should be doing. My opinion.
Well, I understand your objections. And I, I still fall back on the fact that this is the recommendation that the administration has brought forward to us. And I believe they've put a lot of time and effort into making that recommendation. And um I have confidence that they have thought of each and every aspect of it in um, in that process before they brought the recommendation forward to us.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion passed.
Six and five, item under the superintendent's report, item three point zero six, the superintendent's goals. Your five superintendent's goals that are aligned to the PDE's six superintendent standards we brought forth for your approval.
Motion.
Second, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carried.
President Placido, that ends, concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Roberts. Moving on, Swisher's report.
Mr. Sam, I'd just like to respond to the question asked by the public in regard to the public comment and how you uh, make a public comment at, at these meetings. At, at the top of every agenda, at the committee, the whole, at every committee meeting, there's a section as, as part of that agenda that indicates the process which you must follow in order to make a public comment and reserve five minutes of time. That information is also found in, on the Mill Creek Township School District website in policy nine oh three. So I encourage members of the public, if they have concerns or don't understand the process, as to what they have to do to follow in order to reserve the five minutes, please read either the, the agenda or policy nine oh three. It's clearly laid out, and I don't think any further answer to those questions. It's clearly laid out and I don't think any further answer to those questions is necessary. So that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stann. Uh, old business? No. New business? No. Down to remarks, seven point oh one. School board remarks.
I just want to say, you know, I know that we get into some heated discussions, we go back and forth. But I really do appreciate all of the board members that put a lot of work into this. And I especially appreciate our administration. I don't, would not want to be in your shoes right now during this time and you guys are doing a fantastic job. So thank you very much.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, welcome to stay. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there. Our next meeting is November twenty-third. Thank you for attending.